Okay, good evening. It's Tuesday, February 11, 2014, and I'm opening up this meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 28, 2014 regular meeting?
Motion.
By Marc.
Second.
Second by Lisa. Any amendments or changes? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We now have an opportunity for public comment with any member of the public like to speak? No? Okay. Then we'll move on to reports and discussion. Oh, wait, our order is not here right now.
You will not be here tonight.
Oh.
The Audit Committee found out this afternoon, but I spoke to him this afternoon. He was able to do a phone conference with us, but he did not feel that was appropriate. He will be here two weeks from now, no doubt about it.
So was that a problem, like?
No.
He just couldn't get here?
Couldn't.
All right. Okay, all right. Just took about at least 20 minutes off our meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, we'll do that then on the 25th. We come now to a discussion of the alternative veterans tax exemption. Joe?
Okay, I'll ask Tom to tag team this one with me. Back in mid-January, we were provided with some information by our legal counsel regarding a fairly recently adopted piece of legislation called the Alternative Veterans Tax Exemption, which extends to veterans in a variety of different categories, the possibility of a tax exemption similar to that that's already available to them for municipal taxes, but has heretofore not been allowable for school tax exemption. So however, the state in its infinite wisdom, and well, I won't editorialize on that, but anyway, the state has left the decision up to the local school districts as to whether or not to adopt an exemption and at what level. There was a whole pantheon of different levels of exemptions that a school district can adopt or adopt none of them, that's up to the district. The one thing to keep in mind in terms of this primer on this particular tax exemption is that any exemption given to a group, in this case veterans, this is not funded by the state like the STAR exemption. So if a group such as the veterans get a tax exemption, that means that all of the other taxpayers who are not veterans bear the burden of that portion of the tax levy that is exempted. So that's how this particular one works. So it's helpful to keep that in mind. In your packets, there's some information that we provided to you. If you turn to that page that has a yellow bar and a green bar, the yellow bar is what's called the, what is it? It's got funky title.
Basic maximum.
The basic maximum or the maximum basic. It's like the basic tax exemption, but it's the maximum basic. There are a couple of columns that are smaller exemption that are to the left of that column, and then there are a bunch of columns to the right of that column that represent a larger exemption. And the green shaded one is the exemption that many of the municipalities that already have veterans exemptions, that's the level that many of them are at currently. So we just wanted to show you what the maximum basic one is and then what a number of the municipalities in the area are at at this point. School districts statewide are in the process, I assume, of doing what we're doing, which is discussing this exemption and making decisions as to whether they want to vote to provide one of those exemptions to veterans or study it more and wait. They can always adopt one of these exemptions and in a subsequent year, it's not like a once, you know, a one-time chance. And a number of districts that I'm aware of in the area are studying it and either haven't made a decision or may likely not adopt one, and some of them, a few of them have. I would also point out that the timeline is really pretty tight from when the legislation was approved and signed, I think literally a week before the holidays, to our getting the information on this from our legal counsel in mid-January to our doing some research. So we had some pretty good information as to what we might be considering to this meeting. And my understanding is that the, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, that the deadline for adopting an exemption for veterans for the coming tax year is to adopt it no later than February 28. So I mean, the timeline from legislative adoption to board action for the coming tax year has been pretty truncated. So we have, you know, Tom has done the research, he's provided you with that, we provided you with a letter from our legal counsel kind of outlining the contours of this particular piece of legislation. And the board would need, any board who is going to adopt an exemption needs to have a hearing and then subsequent action on that. So we're providing this to you today for your, you know, for your information and any discussion that there might be surrounding this topic.
No, oh, I just wanted to add that we did discuss it today at the Finance Committee additionally. Finance Committee is recommending, or our opinion today was that we should maybe wait and not adopt it quickly because we would have to have the hearing and adopt it at the next board meeting. So one thought was that it doesn't give us much time to consider it or to communicate to our community about it and hear back from the community about it. So that was one reason why we felt maybe we should wait on this topic. But that was, you know, our opinion today. Want to hear from everyone else. Go ahead.
I certainly would be in favor of a veterans exemption. I'm just wondering if we have any, I mean, it looks from the charts that I'm looking at, the impact is fairly minimal on the rest of the taxpayers. But I'm just wondering if we have any idea what the impact is on, say, an average home.
Tom, can you address that in some way?
The school district has approximately 6,000 properties in which we collect taxes for. The information we received from the county indicates we currently have about 450 properties that are under veterans exemptions through the county and village. The tax impact really depends on what level you do it. And to give you an example, if we just did the basic that the law is allowing us to, we see at that bottom of the levy, it says levy increase, but it's 0.51 percent. So that's going to shift to all other taxpayers will increase their tax bill by 0.51 percent next year at that minimum level. And at the green one, which is what the county does and what the village does, that's just 1.15 percent. So what it basically would do, if you give you an example, in the wartime, okay, that would, at the 12,000, max, you see the 12,000 there? That would approximately be about $360. That would decrease their tax bill by 360. For the veteran, for the disabled, it's quite a bit more. We're talking the range of 650 or so with, actually, a bit more than that, over $700 at that basic minimum. Now, how much it would go up in each one would depend on what the average tax bill, if the average tax bill was, let's say, $4,000, which probably is about the average. You know, a half a percent would be, I'll just kind of figure this out. Hold on, let me figure that out. It's not a huge, huge impact. It would be about $50. Oh, sorry, hold on a second. On behalf of that, it would be about maybe $20 to $25 would be the average increase for each homeowner to cover the additional amount. Yeah, it'd be about 25 bucks for each household.
For that average $4,000.
About $4,000 would give us about a $25 tax increase on top of whatever the increase the school district has.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else need anything?
So in the Finance Committee, you talked about waiting. What sort of timeframe will we be talking about?
Well, if we don't do it by the 28th of this year, then we wouldn't do it till next year for the following year.
One of the other things that got brought up during the meeting is there's also an exemption, it's called an agent exemption, for senior citizens who, based on an income level, the school district doesn't participate in that. But that is another program that's available for exemption. But once, of course, what that does is it shifts the burden from, in this case, the senior citizen on an agent exemption to the rest of it. So that's something else that also, that we talked about, is something also to take a look at.
That's not connected to this.
It's not connected to that.
It's not this, but it is.
Something we could have done at any point in time.
Right. It's something that we could do that, I guess, you know, I raised that concern because we don't do that. And I thought, well, if we're shifting the tax burden onto the rest of other taxpayers in previous years, there has been concern raised in the community for, you know, people who are elderly who live on a fixed income, and in fact, their property values have gone up dramatically since they bought their house 60 years ago, and so thus their taxes have gone up. So I just, you know, wondered if we should consider these two together, if we're going to provide some tax relief to specific, you know, categories of people in our community that we might want to do it simultaneously. Is that?
The other issue, and we talked about this in the meeting as well, is that, you know, while everybody has sympathy and appreciation for veterans and, you know, wants to lessen their burden to the maximum extent it is feasible to do, there seems, at least to us, to be something not quite right about the idea of helping out one group of people by burdening another group of people within our community. And one of the things that we were talking about was the concept that what the state is doing here by enacting this program is essentially encouraging burden shift shifting from the community as a whole to another, a group of members of the community for the benefit of others. What would be preferable, to some of us, would be to have the state, you know, relieve people who they perceive as having a burden from taxes of that effect on a statewide basis. So, you know, why should an individual community have to deal with this? You know, veterans are, they live everywhere in New York State, they live everywhere in the country, and the state is really the best placed actor to address the issues veterans and, you know, aging population and other groups deserving of assistance can provide. You know, there's been, there's been a lot of ferment about this issue of favoring certain groups of the community as opposed to other groups within the state. And as a matter of fact, you know, NISBA's been sending out lots of things recently about, you know, their efforts, both lobbying and other efforts, to try to rein that in, rein that into, you know, the regime that the state has been going on, rein the state's been going on for that. And, you know, that's something I think that we should talk about as well and think about, you know, to decide whether we want to put the burden on members of our community or whether we want to join in with other groups within the state to try to encourage the state government to address the problem.
Diane?
I'm in favor of waiting at this point too, but I'm wondering if we'd like to consider, Joe, tell me if I'm wrong, that we could add like a straw poll question on the ballot in May, get more public opinion on this. You know, it's important that we communicate with the public on this and really get a sense of what they want. I think most people, if you just ask them, may be in favor of veterans discount, but, you know, really understanding that it's at their expense, you know, communicating clearly to everybody.
Well, I'll speak to that because I did it our meeting a little earlier today, and I'll just give you my opinion. And in my opinion, I don't think it's advisable to start to get into the business of straw polls on the ballot for a couple of different reasons. Number one, I think as much as you say it's a straw poll, it's a non-binding referendum, I think people will generally see any referendum as a binding referendum. And in fact, it may wind up, the board may wind up feeling bound to that kind of a vote. I just, again, I just give you my opinion. I also think it sets a precedent that the board might want to consider whether that's a road that it wants to go down in terms of having various groups say, well, just put that on as a non-binding referendum and let's see what the community wants. And we do have a process vis-à-vis board meetings and elected officials for people to pass along how they feel on a particular issue. And currently, that's the beans by which we take the temperature of the community. So I will, and I guess that's all I have to offer on that, on that particular idea. I think it sends a mixed message to people, and I think it has the potential to create some confusion in the community as to what's binding and what's not binding. So I would not recommend that, but if the board feels so inclined, that's, that would be your choice ultimately to put something like that on the ballot.
Dear Joe.
Within the Finance Committee, you had a range of perspectives. Am I correct, or you were all sort of of one mind?
I'm the third member.
Oh, you're the member. Okay, yes, tell us.
I think we all were very similar minded about it. The timeframe is very tight.
Yeah.
I mean, I really don't have an honest, solid opinion about how I feel about this. Even the idea of a straw poll, I think, is too tight for me to decide. I agree with Joe, if we put it out to a straw poll, our community is going to want us to respect how they vote, and therefore it will be psychologically a binding vote. So I would only want to go that route if we're prepared to follow it. And I think it's going to take more than a few weeks of discussion for us to decide that. I also am a little bit concerned about just the way the conversation can go so quickly from who is deserving of a tax exemption, from even just the small conversation that we had from vets to seniors to what about unemployed, are people about to foreclose in their house? And how do you decide? And why should we be the deciding factor? So, I mean, I certainly don't want our community to be having that conversation over coffee. It's not a friendly, neighborly conversation to be having. And I think that if the state feels that they want to do more for our vets, they should. And I'm in support of that. And I think that NISBA is in support of that in a way that doesn't read these kinds of conversations amongst neighbors in local communities. So, and I know that NISBA is sort of advocating for things, for a change in this legislature. So I'd like to see if there's going to be any change within the next year before we take definitive action. For me, the whole thing is just, it's too tight for me to come up with a real answer.
And I agree with Diane. It's, on the face of it, it's a really wonderful gesture, but I think it's too tight for really any kind of reasoned discussion about moving forward and what it really means for the rest of our community. I would be in favor of putting it off if we can.
I think there was also a certain consensus just in that, in that discussion earlier today, I mean, a level of uncomfortableness that the state has put local school districts, not just Rhinebeck, it's every school district in the state, in a position of potentially pitting segments of their community one against the other. And I, while the exemption itself may be a positive outcome, certainly would be a positive outcome for veterans, you know, at what cost in terms of that community dynamic? And clearly, the state didn't want to make that decision, so they've kindly passed that on to us to do that, and we're the ones who are living in this community every day, and certainly wouldn't want that to be a divisive issue in our community and have something that would be potentially positive turn into a, into a community negative. So again, just another concern that I think has to be figured in the calculus of whether we go forward with something like this or not. And again, this doesn't close the door on ever doing this. I mean, this is something that the board can consider every year and in fact, could consider to do it at a lower level one year and then to increase it the next year. I mean, that's, it's not like a one-shot opportunity here. And even going back to the idea of the straw poll or non-binding referendum, if we were to do that, you know, against my thoughts about that, and that's fine, but that couldn't, that wouldn't happen until May anyway. So that would be too late to do anything this year with that kind of feedback or with other kind of feedback from the, from the community. So it seems like there are a lot of, given the timing of this, if nothing else, that there are a lot of constraints against, against making, you know, a decision sooner than we have time to really consider it and gather feedback for our community.
Dear Joe. With what committee or what group within the board would we kind of continue mulling this over, thinking about the possible responses, say, in a year's time?
What? I mean, it could be with the Finance Committee, I think.
Sure, Finance, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, another thought could be maybe starting next fall is the Communications Committee making gestures to the community to get feedback. I mean, we may very well garner quite a bit of support within the community, which is totally fine. I just feel that in two weeks' time, to do a hearing and a vote the same night, it doesn't seem to me to really be in the spirit of what a hearing is supposed to be. And we know that even sort of budget, through budget communications that we get over the years, it's really like a, you know, over the course of a couple of months, people communicate to us. Our hearing, when we do the public hearing, people don't show up, they write to us in the meantime. So I, we could consider sort of a strategy to get, you know, feedback from the community, you know, as soon as the communications from May wants to, in fact. So it sounds like we have consensus then to sort of wait on this issue and look at it more carefully within the Finance Committee. Okay. Let's move on then to our board committee reports. The first one in our packet is the Facilities Committee. And dear Joe, that's you.
So, in our last meeting, we began to look at a draft of a facilities five-year plan that was prepared by Sheldon. And you all have copies of this plan with sort of a set of, series of tiers in terms of urgency, priority, thinking through, you know, various kinds of repairs and infrastructure costs that we can anticipate sort of on the horizon. Tom was helpful in proposing that we think of these repairs under a couple of different rubrics, such as safety and security, that would, you know, sort of comprehend installing new swipe card readers, which needs to be done, looking at the external doors and so on, as opposed to, say, environmental costs, the window replacements, improving the drainage in front of the high school and so on. Apparently, the roof, which is original to the building, which was built in 1996 and '07, is supposed to have a 20-year life, so that is definitely on the horizon. I guess that would make it 2016, '17, officially get 20 years. So we're going to continue speaking about this kind of initial five-year plan, thinking through what really are the most pressing concerns and what are the kinds of items that cannot be budgeted for easily. And that's, I think, the process, the conversation we're enmeshed in now. So there is, there was another question raised about if there are really these much sort of larger expenses, what, how would one fund those, what are the different options for that? And the last bond referendum did take place in 2004 and 2005, so, you know, would that be something to even contemplate in a few years? I'm clear. Oh, and also that the new energy efficient lighting was installed.
We saw it today.
It's being installed.
Being installed. Any questions for the Facilities Committee?
It's very bright.
Laura?
So is this five-year plan going to be sort of reorganized by category?
Yes, yes. This is a first.
And a lot of these things that are on here are being taken off, some of the smaller ones, things to be done, but, you know, replace window air conditioners. That's not going to be a bond referendum, that's something that will be eternally. But, you know, we will take a look at it, determine what things that we can do within the budget over the next couple of years, you know, things that are in the, you know, from a thousand to 20,000. When it gets above that, maybe you can do one of those things a year as far as within its budget, but multiple things, we see multiple things will be coming up. It's really looking like two years out because even if we have a referendum, you couldn't even have one to get it by May. But let's say we did a referendum by next fall, okay, so that's the fall of 2014, before you get approval. By the time it gets up to the state, it's the spring of 2015. By the time you get that stuff back, you're really not even going to start doing anything until the summer of 2016 because of the whole bidding process and everything. And that's if you get, you know, so it's a long process to get from the beginning talking stages to you actually get a shovel in the ground. It is a long time to go through all the hoops to get there. So that's why we're trying to think out ahead, thinking a couple of years down the road, what do we see coming on the horizon? And we'll take a look at that, like I said, looking at it from safety and security, looking at environmental, and I'm sure we'll look at educational type of things too, that are even in this as far as, this is just really looking at facilities, but we also may probably have to take a look curriculum in that, and I have, you know, some curricular items that may need to be bonded. You don't know. Depends where we go in technology and all sorts of things. So, but at least it gets us starting to talk about it.
Diane?
I just want to, I really appreciate having this draft in front of us. I think it helps me as a board member on the Finance Committee to understand what the coming expenses are that we need to be saving for. And it gives us, you know, an idea of when grants become available, like a quick checklist of things that we want and are planning to do or looking for outside grants for this. So I appreciate you putting this together.
It also, you know, it's a discussion we can have over the next month or so, whether or not you want to consider a referendum to do a capital reserve, to establish one.
Right.
But just to think about it.
But just to think about establishing and putting money in there, if you, you know, if you think that's necessary, this would be the time to do it, going into the May budget vote, that if you wanted to create a reserve fund, that's when you'd want to put it on to the ballot. Just something to consider.
Right. Okay. Any other questions for Facilities? Thank you, Deirdre. The next set of minutes is from the Communications Committee. Oh, and is that also you, Deirdre? Thank you.
Well, we had an extremely exciting communications meeting because Steve Jensen presented us with a draft of a comprehensive communications plan to begin that conversation with us about identifying goals and strategies around communication, coordinated from his office in concert with Joe, administrators and members of the Department of Education. So we talked about that at great length. You all have drafts of that in front of you. I guess I'd direct your attention particularly to page three, where we, at least sort of, this is a first pass, at talking about what our communication goals are, developing and maintaining positive collaborative relationship with all stakeholders in the Reinbeck Central School District. And we talked a lot about internal and external audiences for communication. Sometimes we tend to focus a lot on how we get the message out to families or the community, but it's equally important to think about within our community, in the buildings, with the teachers and staff and administrators, how do we talk with each other about what's happening and share news initiatives and celebrate accomplishments? So that was one thing that, I know I in particular found really exciting about this plan. Two, utilize a variety of media to maximize awareness and support. And we actually spent a lot of good time talking about different platforms, particularly electronic platforms for that kind of sharing, the idea of using apps, for instance, on smartphones, as opposed to going down the path of Facebook or tweeting, you know, what are the kind of virtues of each of these platforms? We're really going to be talking about that in the coming months. Number three, employing, establishing an effective employee communication plan to improve internal communications, a lot of just speaking about. Establish strong positive connections between individual schools and their communities. Achieve coordinated communication internally and externally, particularly around safety issues and crisis management. Obviously, that's really important in this day and age, and we have School Messenger. How can we kind of capitalize on that and do more? Creating a sort of a centralized sense of message in the district is another one of the points. Establishing a clear brand identity, what does it mean to, you know, sort of be part of the Reinbeck Central School District? Maintain a proactive media relation with local, state and national media, but also politicians, communicating with legislators. Utilizing effective operational practices. And then we kind of went through and looked at a number of different strategies. So any feedback from this document that you want to share with us, we'd be very happy to kind of take back into our conversations around this plan. But considering that Steve's only been with us for how long?
December.
Yeah, December, these sort of two, two cycles of meetings. Suddenly, we have a draft of this in our hands. So we had a really wonderful conversation about it and I'm anticipating we will continue to do so. Other things to put on your calendar are the Coffee, the Board. I think Joe's already been sort of checking that date out with everyone's, does that seem?
Yeah, everybody's responded and there are some yeses and some no's, both for the morning and the evening session, but looks like there are at least four people who are available for each session with a couple of question marks. I might be available for both. So I think, again, unless we want to look for a date when more than four are available for each session, it seems like there's at least critical mass for, for both the morning and any evening session on that date.
Okay, so March 12th. And actually, in the committee, we did talk about a sort of series of ideas that Lisa threw out to us before we went into our meeting this month about really thinking about opportunities to have those one-on-one live conversations, just as well as, you know, looking at the various media we have for communicating electronically. It seems like our communication plan has to really address and build on both of those fronts, right? The kind of, you know, there's some people who really like to talk to you face-to-face or other people who like to do it through other means, and so we, our plan has to very much cover all of that. Very happy to say that Mark has continued the tradition of having the banners for the graduating class posted in the center of town, and he just took care of that with Tom. I think everything's set with that. Also, Steve Jensen, who is not busy putting together the communications plan, has been responsive to questions about how do we learn from families who leave the district for a period of time? Sometimes they come back, sometimes they don't. What can we learn from the experience of those families? You have a draft of interview questions that he plans to use, and if there's any feedback you want to give us tonight, you can certainly share that with Steve. But we're forging on with that project of trying to reach out to families and really learn from their questions, concerns and experiences. And I, oh, also, we continue talking about the possibility of having a survey. And the survey, of course, would be something that would be integrated into this more holistic idea of how we reach out to folks, you know, whether it's through coffees or having a special button on the front page of the website where people can send comments immediately. They know where to go to send a kind of real-time concern to us. We're continuing to kind of look at an array of options for doing that. So our agenda moving forward is to continue talking about the survey. How should we design it if we were to go forward with that? What are we going to learn from a survey that we can't learn through other means? That's an important question I ask. Follow up with Steve on those phone conversations and continue working with the comprehensive communications plan.
Very good. Very exciting.
And I've been hard at work planning for when we will unveil Steve Jensen.
I've got years.
We're going to bring him in on a little, on a little rolling cart with a drape over him and we'll.
Talk a lot.
Yeah, he's like the mystery man. He's doing a, he's doing a lot of work. Nobody's seen him except for me, you know? It's kind of like the Wizard of Oz thing.
Maybe you are a student.
Maybe I am. You'll never know.
He is our new Director of Communications and Technology.
But I think Steve will make an appearance on Saturday, March 8th, at our Budget Workshop because he'll be speaking to the topic of technology and.
Terrific.
And where we go from there, so.
Any questions for the Communications Committee? I just want to note in your minutes that Steve has shared that since September 2013, approximately 12,000 mobile hits have been recorded. So that's hits to our website from mobile devices. So that, I'm just interested even in that. I mean, that doesn't, so that's just, a lot of people are using, or some people are using a lot, our website. And that's really interesting in a school district with however many families, you know, fewer than 1,000 actual families. That's really impressive.
That they're utilizing it often. And of course, he immediately set about figuring out how on that, on your iPhone or whatever you're using, how can we sort of best have the site, you know? And he talked to School World about reformatting, and it's actually much more user-friendly now.
Yes, I didn't notice that myself, yes.
Does Steve know what people are looking at on their phones on our website? I mean, is it kids checking the homework or is it parents looking for, you know, resources?
Board meeting agendas.
Board meeting agendas, minutes.
Sports schedules.
Sports schedules. Yeah, he didn't break that out for us. I don't know if it's possible.
He can get that information if we hadn't asked him for that. He really got this because we had been talking about how difficult the website is on any kind of mobile device, iPad, iPhone, Android. So he's just beginning to delve into what School World is capable of doing.
All right, so any, any other questions for Communications? Thank you. And it is really exciting to see this plan. I mean, I, we've been talking on this board for many, many, many years about the communications plan, and it's very exciting. Thank you. Do we have any other minutes from Board Committee?
No.
Right? Other people have met, but we don't have a minute. We move on now to discussion of nominations and elections for Duchess BOSI's Board.
Yeah, just to let you know, each year, there, there is an election for representatives to the BOSI's Board of Education. This year, there are two open seats, and because the seats rotate in terms of the districts who can nominate candidates for those seats, this year is, Reinbeck is eligible to nominate somebody to run for, for that board seat. It can be somebody who is a sitting member of this board, so for those of you who don't have enough to fill your, your life, you could serve on two boards simultaneously. And in fact, that has happened, and I believe some of the current BOSI's Board members serve on other boards. Tom Hurley from the Millbrook Board, whom some of us met when we were in Rochester, he is also a member of the BOSI's Board. At one point, Arthur Pritchard, a member of the Reinbeck Board, also served on the BOSI's Board. But my understanding is that members of the, of the Reinbeck community could also be nominated and, if elected, serve. So if you're interested or know somebody who might be worthy of a nomination, there's a process for nominating that's, that's laid out in this letter. In terms of timelines, it's coming up fairly quickly. They need to know by March 12th, so we only have, I think, two more board meetings before the 12th. So I can just give that some thought in the event that you have somebody in mind. I would also like to point out to you from this, this cover letter, that Duchess BOSI's has their annual meeting on Wednesday, April 9th. It will be telecast to a remote site at Mill Road Elementary School up in Red Hook, or you could go down in person to Duchess BOSI's. They'll give a presentation on the BOSI's budget. The other thing that you need to know is that at our meeting on April 22nd, one of the agenda items will be to vote on the BOSI's administrative budget and for two of those people nominated for a seat on the BOSI's Board. Sometimes it falls on the same night as our board meeting. Sometimes we have to convene a special meeting on a Tuesday to, to vote, but this is on a night that we're scheduled to meet as a board. So required to come out for an extra meeting this year, but some years it will. So if you're interested, let me know or let the rest of us know at one of the next two board meetings, and we can nominate and vote if there is someone. If there isn't, that's okay, too.
Any questions about that? All right, and we do appreciate those people who do serve on the Duchess BOSI's Board. It is another layer of community service that is appreciated from the component districts. We'll move on now to our 2014-15 Budget Development Update.
Yeah, Tom is going to hand out some information and speak a little bit to what is our second draft, actually a third draft if you count the rollover budget as a kind of a first, a first shot. What we have done in past years is, in the interest of a greener Board of Education, is not provide you with a, you know, with a multi-page document each time we do a draft, but rather to provide you with a one or two-page overview that shows you what has changed since the prior draft. And the, and this is in the interest of those of you new to the Board. We show you the salient facts from the rollover budget, then from the first draft budget, then we show you things we have added to the budget since the last go-around, then things that we have deleted from the budget. We strive to have the number of items and the total dollar amount of the additions be much smaller than, than for the deletions. We're looking for deletions and not additions where at all possible. And then if you go to the, to the second page, we show you how much has been cut, where we are in terms of budget increase, proposed levy increase, et cetera, et cetera. So we're trying to give you a, the Reader's Digest version of the second and each subsequent draft. If anybody ever wants to see the whole, the whole tree's worth of numbers, you know, just let us know. We can provide that to you, but we try to simplify it as much as possible to focus on the numbers that are changing. So with that, I'll ask Tom to give us a brief overview of the progress we've made since the last time we talked about the first draft budget.
With the second draft, one of the things that we took into consideration is tightening up of the budget so that we spend a greater percentage of the budget. We've been in the 95, 96% range, so the idea is to tighten that up so we're only in the 97 and a half or so percentage, so that will tighten things up. So I went through to tighten some things up to get it as close as to what is actual. We've gotten some BOSI's figures, though not all of them yet, but we got quite a few of them. And also, I took into consideration that the board would approve tonight's cooperative transportation bid and adjusted those numbers in, in this particular draft. So just to give you an idea of the additions, and there wasn't a whole lot of additions, and basically this goes into a little bit of the tightening of the, of the budget. And the first thing you see is clerical salaries going up 6,000. Well, it's just a shift in the, how we are using the federal funds. We're putting more money away from curriculum towards special education. So this is increasing the curriculum clerical support to the general fund, but later on, you'll see there's a $14,000 decrease to the special education clerical. So net effect is $8,000 decrease. The next one, BOSI Services, quite simply. What that is, is database for the library. It's been slightly increased, we've been using databases more and more for research, so increase that. But later on, I took a whole bunch out because we found that I was double budgeting for it. I was budgeting for it and the high school was budgeting for it, so we took that out. See, a fairly large increase to the transportation handicap. There's some good negatives later on, but that is an increase based on one of the contractors' increases to the bus, their bid. But at the same time, we reclassified one of the transportation from a residential to a handicap. I consider it handicap more than residential. So those were the additions to it, a little less than $80,000, but I was able to go through and able to decrease everything else by $430,000. And basically, I did get information, the first one, BOSI Services. I know exactly how much now that the admin for the BOSI's is. Overall, it is an increase slightly like 1%, well over 1%, from last year's. I'm comparing the first draft to the second draft, just to let you know, the prior budget, first draft.
Right.
Not last year's draft or anything.
Right.
Last draft. Other expenses, one of them that we found that we double-booked a thing, that was the credit recovery for math that Dr. Dabencourt talked about. I created a salary line for it in that he happened to put it in his own budget. We noticed that we both had done it, so we took it out of his budget and kept it in payroll. But as we see the next four, no, next five salaries, basically, these are people that are being paid out of the federal funds through grants and taking them out of the general fund to close it and tighten it up even more. So it's, it's not an extra expense to the school district, it's just, you know, tightening up that budget. The next one, equipment, $33,500. We took it off of the principal's list, and it is now on the wish list. So you'll see that on the wish list, so that's something that the Board of Education can decide upon. The Resource, Souna Resource Officer, we had scheduled for two days, we cut that back to one day. We're only using them one day. We're saving the money this year, and we're taking it out of the budget for next year. Still have them for one day a week, though. Was able to tighten up the BOSI Services, able to drop it by 5,000. The next two, teacher and clerical salaries in special education, once again, that's a tightening of the, of the budget with those salaries covered in the, in the grants. The 22- The 2280, the BOSI Services, that's the ACHED program. We have two less kids, students, not kids, students, that are anticipated to be enrolled next year, so that was helpful to be able to bring the budget down. Software supplies, that's where you also found I had a double, I do it in the BOSI site because we purchase it through BOSI's, but the library decided to put money in for it also, so that was taken out. So then the next one also for the social worker, that's also a federally grant, I was able to reduce that by. The next two are the transportation for residential and non-public. One of them was switching from one category to the other, but the other reason for it, though, is a decrease in the rates in which for the transportation bid. See a significant savings here. You know, so that, that was very nice to see when it computed everything, very helpful for ourselves. On the next page, it's the BOSI's transportation. This is, we don't know if we're going to need it or not, this is the thing, this is the trans-shuttle between the data site and, what's the other site? The data site and Salt Point. There's a bus that runs between the two at a midday to take students from one campus to the other. Currently, we don't have anybody doing that, but it's quite simple that that could happen next year and it's not charged by kid, it's charged by school district. If there's five school districts on that, they take the total charge about it by five. If we're the only kid on that bus, we take up the entire thing. So this is a little bit of a safeguard for us. Last year, we did have, not this year, this year we have nobody, but last year we did have somebody, ended up being about 10,000, but there happened to be quite a few other school districts at that time that take the bus also. So that's helpful. Contract expenses, this is for the auditorium, just reducing the amount of supplies we need for there. We just really haven't materialized that many needs, but they're there. The next one is with the teacher retirement system. They did come in with a new rate. I had budgeted at 17.75 percent of salary, which was the high end of the estimate. Last week, they came out saying, still an estimate, but I've never seen them change this one, at 17.53. So that saved about $20,000, but once again, as I went through and tightened everything up, I recalculated the entire teacher retirement system and was able to reduce it by an entire $45,000. So between the pluses and minuses, we were able to reduce this budget by $350,000. Much of that is for two reasons, that's the tightening of those federal salaries, taking them out of the general fund, keep them just in the federal, and with the bus transportation bid, in the, in the teacher retirement system. All in all, we're under now $31 million as a budget. The budget, the budget is 2.13 with the tax levy increase at 2.53 percent. We currently have a tax levy limit percentage of 2.78, so right now that this particular budget is under the tax limit by a little over $63,000. Questions?
I would ask for a round of applause for that.
Yeah, really, very good. No, and the final number is excellent, so at this point in time, so, you know, well done. Questions?
One thing I would just point out, and Tom used the word tighten up, if he used it once, he used it 20 times, and I just wanted to point out that tightening up those, those elements in the budget means that, means two things. It means, first off, we have, we have less headroom in our budget for some unanticipated expense. I mean, you know, we're, we're okay in that regard, but we have less of that headroom than we've, we've had some other years and we will, if we spend a higher percentage of our budget as, as the Board has asked us to and as our, you know, it's come out in previous audits, that also means that's less fund balance that we're generating. And I'm not saying that's necessarily a bad thing, but when you start to look at those figures in future years and you see us generating less fund balance in, from the 2014-15 school year, this was a deliberate effort to, to tighten that down. So I just wanted to, to give everybody a heads up that that is an inevitable result of, of tightening the budget. But Tom did exactly what we've asked him to do and appreciate that. And yeah, it's nice to be at this point, in the, in the early part of February and already be below our goal in terms of that tax levy cap, which we've tried to use to drive our budget up to, over the last several years.
And Joe, you let us know, you and Tom at the Finance Committee, that the plan is for our next meeting to have a pri, the sort of wish list prioritized so we can begin to start looking at, you know, when these numbers continue to firm up, if there are different things we are thinking of adding to the budget, do we have room for that?
Because one area that we haven't really did planning, we've done planning, but no numbers have come into this budget, and that's for technology. That is one piece that isn't here. There is money for technology here, but I didn't add any new money to technology, okay? So the money we currently have and we usually have, that's there, but I didn't add anything extra to it. And that's after we sit down with Steve and Marvin and, and get curriculum and everybody else involved, but there is no money in there. So yeah, we're $68,000 to the good, but we haven't built anything in as far as technology. We do have money set aside, some money set aside, but you know, depending on the way we go, this easily could get chewed up right away.
Absolutely.
There's no increase in the technology money in this budget over last year? There's, I think, 10 grand. I think just overall increase it by 10 grand, but 10 grand on 250,000 isn't a whole lot, little something.
Diane?
Thank you, Tom, for all this work. The only question I have, Joe, last year, the principals asked for more time for the SRO and now it's being cut back, I just wanted to...
Well, it's not being cut back. It, yeah, and we had actually budgeted more, but then there were some discussions after that point in the budget process and we did not, we did not expand the program. So since we did not expand the program and we're not looking to expand the program this coming year, Tom tightened up the budget and made sure that what's in there is what we're actually spending and there's no cushion in there to expand the program. So we're not cutting the program back, but we are not, nor are we expanding it. We maintain a status quo in our respect.
Which is one day a week for the whole district.
That's correct.
Diane?
I was wondering if we could follow up either next time or at the budget meeting, the Saturday workshop, on the sports topic of participation and overall costs. And Tom, we had talked to us about reviewing that document you gave us last year, the historical cost of our budget percent increases over, it was like the last 10 years?
We have it for like 20 years.
20 years. And if we could run it next to enrollment numbers too?
Oh, okay.
I think that would be helpful.
We'd be able to do that at our next meeting. Oh, yeah. The other thing I'd want to mention, because we did talk about it a little bit today at, at our Finance Committee meeting, even though we're, we're below the tax levy cap goal earlier than we had been the last couple, maybe we're just getting a little better at it, I don't know, but we're, we're at that point a little earlier. We're also at that point where, except for potential breakage from additional retirements, most of, most of these numbers are firmed up. So we don't anticipate finding out next week, oh wow, our health insurance costs are going to be $40,000 less than we'd originally had been estimated for us. We, we figure at this point, and maybe that's why we're at the place we are in terms of the, the tax levy limit, we're not expecting any large decreases in, in estimated expenditures here, except for possible retirements that would provide us breakage by hiring, you know, a less expensive teacher, lower on the salary schedule than somebody who's been here for, for 30 years. So we're not anticipating any big pleasant surprises. It'll just be a little, you know, a little nibbling around the edges, I would think, for the, for the rest of the process. But we're already in a good place, so we don't have to do much more than nibble at this stage of the game, so.
And this is calculated using revenues based on the governor's budget?
Yes.
Which could change, but we're using that worst-case scenario.
I won't go over it, but just for your information, I did update the state aid figures in here to match exactly what the governor's proposal was. And everything else, we've held static. For example, amount of fund balance to reduce the tax levy, we, we're estimating right now using the same amount as, as we did this past year. So obviously that's not, none of that's cast in stone, but that's what we've used for estimates at this stage of the game and that can be changed either way, as, as we wish, as we go through the process.
Do you want to review any of this, or anyone have any questions on the revenues? Or any other questions on the budget? All right, Tom, thank you. That's great. Excellent. We're very fortunate here. We move on now to comment section of our agenda, and we're at good news. Does anyone have any good news? Diane?
I'd just like to say that Sheldon and his team does a great job, especially this kind of year with salt, dirt and water bottles and just, they're on top of everything.
That is a good point. We have so much snow out there and ice, but the pathways are clear, parking's easy, you know, we shouldn't take it for granted, so yes, absolutely. Thanks, Sheldon.
We need to warm up the temperature just a little bit.
If you had any control over that. Well, I'll just also share a small thing, well, not so small, but in the communications thing, the plan, there was discussion of sort of the brand and I know there was Spirit Week in the high school last week and a pep rally and I have heard a lot about it, saw a couple of pictures of the hawk was roaming around the gym, my understanding, and lots of laughter and dancing and the band playing and as well, the pep band played at a girls' basketball game and the boys' basketball game last night, and there were a lot of community members at the basketball game last night. So at the high school level, that is all, I think, good news about developing a sense of school spirit.
I'll just report from Buckley Middle School, the Top Chef competition took place last night and somehow I managed to get to be one of the judges. The judges couldn't be there, so this was a dream come true for me.
How'd you get that gig?
I just happened to be at the right time, yes. I'm usually just, you know, helping usher people out the door with a plate or something, so. But it was great, a great success. Again, really wonderful to see chefs from our community come and contribute their time and help educate students in the middle school about nutrition and making good food choices and the kind of art of cooking and baking and it was really a wonderful event. And also, it reminds me of how in activities like building level planning team and PTSO, they were represented from both groups there last night. It's a really wonderful opportunity for families, people in the community, teachers, administrators, all to collaborate in a space that our schools make possible, outside of just the academic program. And to see people coming in, you know, on a, on a Monday night to share their food was really, really wonderful.
Great. Very good.
Well, and speaking of sharing food, we debuted the point-of-sale system in our cafeterias finally, thanks to Tom and Christine and Beth and the, and the staff in, in all three kitchens and Donna too. So kids are seem to be enjoying punching their five-digit pins into the, which I think they're expecting like Angry Birds or something to pop up. That's not happening, but we'll keep you posted. We, we spent some time today at, at our Finance Committee looking at our financials for the cafeteria program and we'll be tracking very closely now that we have a better means for, for keeping an eye on that program. We'll be sharing that out with you at the next board meeting.
Very good. So some good news around the table. Very good. Thank you. We move on now to old business. I have a couple of things for old business. One is that it was gratifying to get some positive feedback from members of our community on the letter that we sent to Commissioner King and the Board of Regents about our perspective on the various reform initiatives in the state. And so I was happy to, to see that. And as well, at the Deirdre and Joe and I attended a Chamber of Commerce Dinner meeting and it was a dinner for the state of Rhinebeck and Kevin Cahill spoke, Joel Tyner, Senator Gibson, Jim Riordan, it was his last week as mayor, and Elizabeth Spindsey, the town supervisor. And as well, they honored Ward and Linda Stanley as, you know, good contributors to the Rhinebeck community. But what I was really proud of was Kevin Cahill spoke first, our Assemblyman, and he really praised our schools and he had been here for the opening of our technology lab downstairs. And it was, he spoke so positively about what we have done in this school district and I was really pleased that he was sharing that in, to our, with our business community, many of whom have children in the schools, but many of whom don't. And he also discussed a little bit about that the governor has reduced the amount of money that we're going to receive. So, you know, it was an important item all around as well. Senator Gibson reached out to Joe to say, or one of his aides, we should be meeting to talk about the letter that we wrote and that the senator had already seen. So it was, I just want to report that it was important that these conversations are happening with our legislators and within the business community of Rhinebeck. So that was important. And then I also want to, under old business, just remind us that we do have lobby dates coming up. The next, the first one is with Dee Dee Barrett, a week from Friday, so February 21st. I will, I will send out an email asking for, or we could spend a minute here discussing any items about which we want to lobby. So I think I, I don't know whether people got to see the email that I sent, which was really just forwarding you an email that NISBA had previously sent, and I'm sure you've seen, about the gap elimination adjustment. And that's a big lobbying point for NISBA this year, now that the governor is saying he has a surplus. Why are schools still having to give up a portion of state aid to make up for the previous, the deficits over all these years? So we should, that would be one item I think that we should talk to our legislators about. But there are other items as well, including maybe what we talked about previously, which is state policies that actually pit various segments of our community against each other potentially. The veterans exemption being one, and others being maybe the formula that is being used to, around this property tax freeze, which is that if, you know, X number of municipalities within a county don't reduce their, increase their property tax by X amount and everyone gets a freeze, you know, what kind of pressures this puts on various constituents in a community? You know, we might want to think about communicating to our legislators about being careful to enact policies that basically are taking the responsibility away from the state and the governor and shifting them on local communities to make these kinds of decisions. So those are conversations we can, we can sort of begin to have about how we might want to lobby. Any other old business? I guess just one more thing I'll say, it could be under other, is that I went to a Dutchess County School Boards meeting last Thursday and they just, there was discussion there about the gap elimination adjustment and the need to advocate with legislators. Just so we all know, we have not done this recently, but I, you know, NISBA has a lobby day on March 9th, which is a Sunday, where they sort of coordinate in Albany, people come together, and then Monday is the group lobby day in Albany. We have not done that for We have not done that for a couple of years since we've been meeting with our legislators locally. I don't know that there's interest in doing that again this year, perhaps another year that Dutchess County School Boards Association, there were some people who are advocating for that. It's sort of still valuable to collectively show up in Albany and participate in that. So while that's happening soon, I don't know that anyone has any interest in it or time that Monday, it's something maybe to think about for the future.
I'll just say that we found it more productive to meet with legislators independently in their own office, rather than go to lobby day when we have to share their time with their school districts from the area. So it's worked out to our benefit to meet with them privately.
Yes, I mean, we've had, you know, up to an hour of discussion, and I think we have been reasonable in trying to represent not just the particular issues for Rhinebeck, but school districts broadly, and NISBA's legislative position as well. So I think we're trying to be good comrades to our other school boards. And then I also want to point out, you all might be interested in that, and Marian, you can tell me if you, as district clerk, have received any notice of this, that the Dutchess County School Board Association hosted Perspective Board Member Workshop in April. Have you gotten any notification about it?
I got a flyer.
Okay. If you were able to share that with us, because as, you know, if you know people who might be interested in running for school board, I attended that many years ago, and it can be a useful event.
So that isn't for BOCs?
No, this is for school board members in Dutchess County. The County School Board Association hosts this workshop. David Shaw was at that meeting to talk about trends in employment contracts in the county. The next meeting is going to be a sharing of school boards, any statements or letters that school boards have constructed around education reform issues like testing, and, you know, in bloom, and data sharing in the Common Core. And I'll just say here that I want to thank Kelly Lappin, who is a member of the Arlington School Board, who has taken on the job of really reviving the Dutchess County School Boards Association on a volunteer basis, and ran the meetings, set the agenda, is communicating with people, and holding that position until June, while the association figures out whether they can afford to hire someone half-time or not, or there are school boards, apparently like Westchester-Pundham County School Board Association, has like three full-time staff and does all kinds of organizing. Then, of course, you know, more northern School Board Association are just sort of volunteers getting together. And so for the future, just to know that Kelly is trying to collect information and decide on it collectively with members of the executive committee, which is basically all the representatives from the districts, about the future of the association. So that's my old business. Any old business? No? Okay. We have another opportunity for public comment. Anyone like to comment? No? Okay. Then we move on to other.
I have an other. So it was, there was a question asked about reviewing personnel records, and I'm reading from the email, which is our policy, which I have to admit I've never read before, and I wonder if the policy committee can go over this. It doesn't seem to me that what we practice is entirely consistent with what our policy said. Specifically, the superintendent is request, okay, so board members may review employee personnel provided the superintendent has requested in advance to bring the file to a regularly scheduled open meeting of the board, and then the records are reviewed during executive session. So in general, does it have to be? Is that a law that it should be brought to an open meeting and go into executive session? Or is that something that we wrote 15 years ago? Or can it be reviewed?
I'm not prepared to answer the question. With that in mind, we'll have to, you know, we'll have to do some research on that with our legal counsel when we're reviewing that.
As you all know, the policy committee is in the process of reviewing policy manual that one we haven't gotten to yet, but I think it's fair to say that we're likely to discuss it in our executive meeting.
Well, next meeting is Thursday.
Yes. So we may have a board of state.
Yeah. So I think that's fair, that's fair that the policy committee take that up. It seems to be, it references Commissioner's regulations, so we need clarity on that. Legal counsel. Any other items under other?
I'm just going to note this, that, you know, people have brought to our attention the quality of coaches, and, you know, wanting really solid coaches, and our administrators have noted the experience and expertise of teachers, their ability to coach middle school and high school kids specifically. We're appointing two people tonight who just have incredible coaching experiences, in addition to their qualifications to be phys ed teachers tonight, and I think that's really great. It should be noted. It's exciting to bring that into our school.
Very good. Any other items under other? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to our action items. Does anyone want to remove anything from the consent agenda? All right. They may have a motion to, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the consent items.
So moved.
By Mark. Second. Seconded by Lisa. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the permanent civil service appointment of Stacy Vandenhorn to the position of senior typist, effective February 18, 2014.
So moved.
By Mark. Second. Seconded by Lisa. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. We don't have an auditors report, so we're tabling item 6.3. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept grant awards from the Rhinebeck PTSO in the total amount of $743.15 is stipulated.
So moved.
By Mark. Second. Seconded by Lisa. Any questions? Thank you to the PTSO for more contributions to our school. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint 2013-14 CLS Before School Enrichment Program instructors.
So moved.
By Mark. Second. Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the selection of Social Psychology, 7th Edition, Aronson-Wilson-Ackert, 2010, Pearson, I'm not sure where Pearson fits into that, honestly, and Exploring Social Psychology, the 5th Edition, Myers, 2008, McRae-Hill, as textbooks for the social psychology course.
So moved.
By Mark. Second. Seconded by Lisa. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the three-year probationary appointment of Kevin Yarnell to the position of physical education teacher assigned to Chancellor Livingston Elementary School, effective February 24, 2014, in the tenure area of physical education at a salary of Step 1 BA plus 3, $51,389 prorated, in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2013-14.
So moved.
By Mark. Second. Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments?
I just have a comment, which is, months ago, when the teachers for whom all these positions were being discussed, and many were very concerned in the community, I just think it's incredibly heartening to see the efforts of these search committees to find exit candidates to replace beloved teachers in our schools, and it's a great pleasure to be able to vote on these recommendations.
Yes, thank you for that. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the three-year probationary appointment of Ryan Edson to the position of physical education teacher, assigned to Chancellor Livingston Elementary School, effective September 1, 2014, in the tenure area of physical education, at a salary of Step 1 MA, $56,538 prorated, in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2013-14.
So moved.
By Mark. Second. Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to renumber the following policy, preschool special education from 4321.2 to 4321.13.
So moved.
By Mark. Second. Seconded by Lisa. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve an extension of a leave request under the Family and Medical Leave Act from Megan Rodier, having commenced on December 2, 2013, through March 10, 2014, with such leave to be taken as paid medical leave through the period of disability as certified by a physician in writing, to the extent of accrued sick leave and thereafter through June 1, 2014, as unpaid childcare leave.
So moved.
By Mark. Second. Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve an extension, an additional extension, of the appointment of Lisa Cole as a long-term substitute in the position of social worker at Buckley Middle School, Rhinebeck High School, having commenced on December 3, 2013, and extended through a date on or about January 29, 2014, to be further extended through May 30, 2014, at the pleasure of the board at the salary of Step 1 MA plus 30 plus 30, $61,960 prorated, in accordance with the 2013-14 RTA salary schedule. This appointment is to fill the vacancy created by the leave of absence granted to Megan Rodier, school social worker at Buckley Middle School, Rhinebeck High School.
So moved.
By Mark. Second. Seconded by Lisa. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the donation of $17,846.65 from the Rhinebeck Swim Team Booster Club, and $6,737.33 from the Friends of Rhinebeck Lacrosse, in support of the 2012-13 Boys and Girls Varsity Swimming Program and the Boys Varsity Lacrosse Program as stipulator.
So moved.
By Mark. Second. Seconded by Lisa. Diane?
I just have a question. For the swim team booster, you didn't have a boy swim team. Is this for the girls for the fall, or is this for the next year?
That's for 2012-13, not 2013-14.
Well, the efforts of the parents and students who participated in raising money for the swim team, and of course, for Friends of Rhinebeck Lacrosse, is really admirable. And I know it's on our agenda in terms of the budget discussion, that is one of the items. How much do we fund the various sports programs to expand it? But I just want to acknowledge all the effort that has gone in from those students and parents in making these programs possible. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve an extension of the appointment of Anita Thompson as a long-term substitute in the position of teaching assistant at Chancellor Livingston Elementary School, having commenced on September 20, 2013, through January 19, 2014, through February 25, 2014, at the pleasure of the board at the salary of $127.89 per diem, 50% of Step 1 BA, $51,155, in accordance with the 2013-14 RTA salary schedule. This appointment is to fill the vacancy created by the leave of absence granted to and the subsequent retirement of Paula Martin, teaching assistant at the Chancellor Livingston Elementary School.
So moved.
By Mark. Second. Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional emergency conditional substitute teachers and substitute non-instructional staff of the 2013-14 school year.
So moved.
By Mark. Second. Seconded by Lisa. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. They have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following resolution. Whereas the Board of Education, in accordance with Article 5A of the General Municipal Law, has invited sealed bids for the furnishing of transportation contractor services for the school district, including bids for home-to-school transportation, cooperative bid with SPAC and Kill UFSD, and field and sports trips transportation, cooperative bid with SPAC and Kill UFSD, home-to-school transportation with small buses, and summer school transportation effective the 2014-15 school year, which bids were opened publicly on January 16, 2014. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby determines that the following transportation contractors are the lowest responsible bidders, in accordance with bid specifications for the several transportation contracts. Durham School Services for home-to-school transportation for 65/66 passenger, 28/35 passenger, 16/22 passenger, and two wheelchair-position buses. Durham School Services for field and sports trip transportation for 65/66 passenger, 28/35 passenger, 16/22 passenger, and two wheelchair-position buses. Defile Transportation for home-to-school transportation, 6/7 passenger minivans. Ethan Allen Transportation for summer school transportation, 6/7 passenger minivans. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education hereby awards the transportation contracts to the transportation contractors set forth above for the 2014-2015 school year, subject to renewal for additional years, in accordance with the prices set forth in the bid analysis annexed here, too. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the superintendent of schools to execute contracts with Durham School Services, Defile Transportation, and Ethan Allen Transportation, upon submission by such transportation contractors of the required insurance certificates and security for the performance of said contracts and the amount of individual contract prices, and in the form specified in the bid documents.
So moved.
By Mark. Second. Seconded by Lisa. Questions or comments? Thank you.
I kind of, I had misread it, and so had Lou misread it to me, about the issue that we discussed.
Right. No, but thank you for putting the bid together. You recommended it. It went all smoothly. You know, we discussed putting it out to bid, and the work has paid off in finding savings for the district. So thank you for the work involved in that.
I think it helps settle the contract, too.
Right. Any other questions or comments? Anything you want to say or not?
I just have one question, and it would have to be discussed in executive session. Could a motion to table it, too?
After I read all of that.
I know, I'm sorry.
You could have said it before I started.
Could I? I don't know. I don't.
You don't have to read it again.
Yeah. All right. Well, we have a motion to table that. Does anyone want to second that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mark. All those in favor? That motion's tabled.
Deirdre, before you read the next two, I would ask for those to be tabled for discussion in executive session.
Okay.
You can read them all.
I guess I should read them all, though, huh?
Read them now or read them later?
Yeah, right. Well, this way the public knows what we're tabling. Motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve an increase in the appointment of Gideon Moore by .6 FTE from .2 FTE to .8 FTE, such increase as a long-term substitute in the position of social studies business computer teacher at Rhinebeck High School, Buckley Middle School, at the pleasure of the board, effective January 29, 2014, through March 26, 2014, at a salary of MA plus 30 plus 30, Step 2, $63,927 prorated at .8 FTE, in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2013-14. We have a motion to table that. Anyone want to second that? Seconded by Diane. All those in favor? That motion gets tabled. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Susan Van Black as a long-term substitute in the position of computer teacher at Buckley Middle School, at the pleasure of the board, effective January 29, 2014, through March 26, 2014, to be reimbursed at her hourly rate. And we have a motion by Diane to table that.
Second.
Seconded by Diane Ceteros. All those in favor? That motion's tabled. They have a motion to move into executive session for discussion of the employment history of particular persons.
So moved.
By Mark. Seconded by Lisa. All those in favor? So we're moving into executive session, and I anticipate that we will come out of executive session and conduct the discussion business.